Okay, you were at the Lawrence Board of Health meeting. I call the meeting to order. Today is February twenty seventh and we're in the conference room of City Lawrence, second floor, city hall. Um, roll call please.
Dr. Gorn?
Present.
Commissioner Gill?
Present.
Aja?
Present.
Present. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a...
Can I have him make a motion to accept the minutes of January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
I second the motion. On favor, aye. Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Okay, we're gonna start with public participation today. Our first, uh, individual to comment is Carlos Hill. And, um... Carlos? Carlos, Carlos! Okay, amigo. Hola.
Salud.
Salud. Por favor, vaya a salir adelante. And, um, nomás diga tu nombre, tu dirección, your name and your address. And, um, you have two minutes.
Okay, mi nombre es Carlos Hill. La dirección de mi negocio es cincuenta y cuatro de la Union. Uh, Lawrence, Massachusetts, zero, dieciocho, cuarenta. Tengo un problema con un contenedor de basura. Que... Uh, una señora me dio el permiso para ponerlo en su propiedad. Pero ya el contenedor, ella no lo quiere ahí. No tengo donde ponerlo ahora. Quiero que ustedes me ayuden a darle el espacio donde se va.
So he's having a problem with a trash container that he was originally given permission to put on a property next to his business and now the owner of that property, uh, wants it removed. So he has no place to put his trash container. So... Yo recomiendo que... Que mañana o pasado, tú vas a comunicar con the Inspector Services, con the chairman, y te va a ayudar.
Okay.
¿Cuál es el dirección de nuevo?
Cincuenta y cuatro de la Union.
Ah, yo soy uno de los members que a mí me gusta ver qué está pasando. So, después de eso yo voy pasar.
Okay.
A las cincuenta de la...
De la Union.
De la Union, okay.
¿Qué negocio es?
Uh, se llama Caballito Human.
Caballito.
Caballito.
Excellent, muy bien. Okay, very nice to meet you.
Okay.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Okay. Number two, Kelly Stanisowski. Stanisowski, is that, did I pronounce right?
I'll save the whole meeting if you want it off topic.
Okay, well, Kelly, you know, I, we, we don't have the ability to turn the camera on and off, but...
Okay.
Be frank, and you got two minutes, we're, we're here to listen to you.
I didn't, I didn't put anything down, but I did watch the meeting last month.
Yes.
I was very disappointed, people came in here and then when the group of people walked out, they were like, they were shady. And then you had a conversation about those people that walked out that were citizens and public taxpayers of the city. Two. You were talking about hookah, or whatever, hookah, hookah, whatever, and with the Board of Health, we're supposed to be looking out for people's health.
Correct.
You stated that the mayor wants to be like Las Vegas, and you weren't choice. There was no choice when COVID was around. You either put a mask on, you closed down schools, and you said it was the best for the kids. There was no choice in any of that. So for you to say that you didn't like the choice, I believe in choice too, so I would be okay with it. But I do think, when we look at the damage of what we did to kids with COVID, the other thing I heard in the meeting too, was that you were talking about how we do everything wrong in the city. I lived here for fifty years and I paid taxes. And when you state that we don't follow codes, and Lawrence is the only department that doesn't follow codes, that upsets me. Because I want the city that I live in to be safe. And when my taxes get raised, and after watching that board meeting, I almost thought you guys didn't think it was being recorded. Cause when that first group of people walked out and the chatter went on, I said, "They don't know it's being recorded." So I had to sit down and watch the whole meeting for myself, to hear what I would hear. And then I'm thinking, maybe they did it because they wanted more money for the budget, or maybe this was some kind of ploy that was going, going on. I'm not sure what it was. But I heard a lot of things in that meeting, and any other citizen that watched that meeting would be upset.
Well taken, well taken. Um... You're right on many fronts. We, we, we definitely comment in the public setting, sometimes unaware that, that we are public figures. Um, we're human, okay, and, and there's no excuse. I, I, I agree with you. Um, I remember you coming to the board meeting when we were talking about...
I was spicy, I wanted a choice.
No, no, and believe me, I, I welcome you to come back every meeting because your input was, was an excellent addition to another voice that was important. Um, especially with regards to COVID, vaccination, masking, the schools. You know, I think in retrospect, we all realize some, 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 you know, some mistakes were made. But, but this is something that was unprecedented, and we're all just trying to do our best. So, I, 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 I wanna close that chapter for now.
No, that's fine, I brought it up because of the whole situation of choice, and I'm...
No, 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 thank, thank you for your, your, your opinion. Your COVID was difficult, e- even on a personal basis. Like I said, I saw more people die in those two years than I had in twenty years.
I know, looking back though, and I don't wanna touch on COVID, I was just saying, I do believe in choice, you know what I mean? Like, I do think that choice is a big thing.
Yeah, public comments are, are great. It, I, typically, we know it doesn't kick off a conversation, but I do wanna make a few comments. Um... The first one is, in regards to code, there is a serious problem in the city that we're gonna do something about, about food establishments that aren't up to code. Meaning they're, they're not licensed. But, we're gonna do our due diligence in the next three months to get every business in the city fully licensed. That is our goal, as a Board of Health, that is our responsibility under the sanitary code. In regards to budget, we are incredibly underfunded. For a Board of Health, for a health department, for a city the size of Lawrence, with the challenges that a city the size of Lawrence faces, multiple food establishments, um, infectious disease control, uh, forty-two school nurses, we, we have a, a budget which is, which is so small compared to other cities of comparable size, that we will continue to lobby to increase our budget, and also restructure the health department. Because right now, the health department exists in a, in a, in a small way, and comparing it to other cities like Lowell, or Worcester, or Springfield, we need to restructure, we need epidemiologists, we need, um, peer support people, we need, uh, nurses, we need, um, TB, uh, contact tracers. There's a lot that this city could do, but we can't do it unless we have an adequate budget and the adequate structure of a health department to respond to the needs of a city of eighty thousand people, or eighty-five thousand people. But I've lived here just twenty-seven years, I'm sure you've lived here longer. I'm a taxpayer, he's a taxpayer, we're all taxpayers. We all wanna see the best for Lawrence, and we're all trying our best. Sometimes it's challenging, and I understand you're upset after watching that meeting. I probably would have been too. I, I, I think we made some comments which were unacceptable, and I, I, I will take full responsibility for it as the chair. Um, but I think our intentions are good. Our intentions are to, I mean, we were trying to help a food establishment get up and running after a bit of an outrageous, uh, infraction, to tell you the honest truth. And, 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 you know, we, we try to do the best, we try not to be so heavy-handed, and we try to do what's right. Um, but, we really thank you for coming in and, and giving us your two cents because it means a lot to us. Um, it's not something we would, we blow off, we take it to heart and we take it seriously.
All right, I know my two minutes, my two minutes is up, so I appreciate you talking back. If most public comments don't talk back or whatever, so I appreciate what you've mentioned to me. I might not come in here all the time, but I watch every send, I don't care if it's planned, zone, Board of Health, I, I watch everything. Cause when we shut down the W N, that's when my ears and everything popped up to find out what, what's going on. But we just restructured it, cause I remember watching the budget meeting during COVID. We put more inspectors, more, you know, inspectors that were supposedly doing everything. So, I listened to those meetings too, but somewhere... It's, it's broken somewhere.
Like, I wanna get to the point that we grade all our restaurants, like a big city does. That's what I would like, and that's what I've had several conversations with, and some of all parties. Cause I would like to, Lawrence is a hub. Lawrence is a great place, Brett, I mean, we started unions here, and I'm a proud Lawrenceian. And I did this job for free for many years, for nine plus years. And I love this city, and every explosion, every issue, I've been there for free and I don't mind, uh, doing sweat equity to put my La- put my Laurentians first. And when we had that same issue with the COVID, I went and talked to you, and I agreed with a lot of it, but there's a lot of regulations and stuff that are on. And I'm a big component of choice.
No, I appreciate that.
And, and, and I don't mind talking to anybody, just like this guy who came in, uh, right now and talked about his bodega. I'm gonna go there after, I had no issues doing that, cause I love Lawrence, and that's why me and Dr. Gorn are here. And we have twenty years plus experience doing this. And thank you, and thank you for checking me, cause I, I'll be more aware of what I sa- what I say. Um, I speak in veracity, the art of truth-telling, and I think I've showed that for many years, and I appreciate you. And if I offend you in any way, or any Laurentian out there, I apologize.
Nothing's so personal, I, like all you guys, I just heard that and wondered, but I'm gonna stay here now the rest of the meeting, is that okay?
Of course, of course.
Absolutely.
And, and thank you for your comments.
Okay, we're gonna move on, we're gonna jump to tobacco product sales update from the season.
Yes, so we've had nine sales combineds back in January. So each one of those retaliation fines and cease and desist orders, we all have paid their fines as step one. Sam's Food Stores, uh, has requested an appeal. So, all of these will have to be before this board at some point, hopefully beginning next month, uh, on a possible, uh, tobacco permit suspension for one or, or, or one day. I don't know whether there's any second offenders here, but that's, that's important. In addition, back in December, there was the raid that was conducted at B and B, uh, the wishy store at three seventy-three Broadway. And out of that raid, they found the presence of, uh, illegal unstamped tobacco products, as well as flavored tobacco products. Which will be fined as a second offense because they have been, uh, caught and instilled before. So there was a two thousand dollars fine issued to them, they pay their fine as well. So they're gonna have to be before this board in a suspension period because there was a second offense. And finally, uh, just recently, on February twelfth, uh, we received a complaint that, uh, the, uh, hookah and tobacco outlet located at eight South Broadway was, uh, selling flavored tobacco, and that's in Massachusetts. So, I conducted an inspection, uh, indeed, I found, uh, not only flavored tobacco products, but also tobacco flavored beverages, which are both illegal, uh, estate, and have an industry. So he was cited for that, it was a second offense, he was issued a fine of two thousand dollars, uh, and he has paid that fine as well. So all the fines and conditions that were paid except for one, uh, for Sam's Food Store that he requested of.
And all those establishments that have had second offenses will need to become before the board at the next meeting?
Of course, any second offenders, right. So, I'm not sure whether we're gonna put nine or eleven actually, uh, before you next month, but we're gonna break it down into batches. Um, that was when the price-wise of sales are concerned, but also as part of my, uh, partner in tobacco, is the reintroduction of, uh, a proposal to change existing local tobacco sale regulations in order to meet state regulations. Let me give you a copy of these to you, uh, this was introduced to you back in, on March of two thousand twenty-two, originally. So that's where you add. And, 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 and...
Do you have an extra one I can have, please?
This is the only one I have now, sorry.
I can make up. Okay, thank you.
So, I've gone through this before with you, but there's been a couple of changes since I last introduced this to you. And for, and it, they are here for the sake of clarity. The first change is that on number two, is now update the definition of characterizing flavor. As you probably know, I went through the same process for the Board of Health in Lowell, and they approved all the changes that I suggested, uh, except that I missed one. And the one that I missed was to change the definition of characterizing flavor to exclude, uh, uh, that excluded menfold products. So we say, hey, the state law says there's no flavor products at all, but the local regulation is still saying, still does, uh, allowing them to, uh, sell flavor, uh, menfold products. Well, we can't have menfold products sold here because the state law doesn't allow that. So in changing the regulation, we have to change that definition as well. That's that. Um, there was another change. If I, I'm gonna go through them, you'll remember as I go through them. So the first one. Uh, and by the way, before I go through these, I just wanna say what it, what it is I'm looking for out of this meeting. At the end of this short presentation, since we've been through this before, I ask that you, uh, vote to allow me to prepare draft. So I prepare the draft, and then there'll be like a, a, a natural process, you know, we schedule a public meeting at some point. But before that, you're gonna review those drafts, make sure the drafts are accurate, uh, they represent the changes that I'm proposing. Most of these cha- of these changes, they're here to bring the local regulation up to par, up to standards with the state regulation. So, but there's some few extra changes here that I've included them because I, I found through the years of doing enforcement in the city, that these will make enforcement easier. So let me just go through them. Number one, update the definition of, of a blunt wrap. A blunt wrap is a roll of a tobacco leaf, or is a sort of like paper, a product that contains tobacco in its fatter. So any roll like that is a blunt wrap, and it's, it's, you can't sell it, it's pursuant to the local regulation. However, companies are coming out with new products that they call them cigars. But when you look at that product carefully, you're actually a blunt wrap. So tweaking the definition would make it clear what is a blunt wrap, what is a cigar. So it's easy for us to spot them when they're doing inspections at the store level. That's number one. Number two, I just covered the update of the characterizing flavor definition. Number three, make the mere presence of blunt wraps and packs of cigars containing fewer than four cigars, and open tobacco package violations, uh, by themselves, uh, make the mere presence a violation. You're already prohibited in the city. The problem is that we continue to find these products there because the distributors keep, continue to push these to the retail stores. And they said, "No, these products are illegal, these products are illegal." So the, the, the managers of the bodegas take those products in, but those products are actually, actually illegal, they can't sell them. If we do this here, then if they have their products there, they could be cited for it, and this is in line with how the state law is written. The state law is written to say, "Hey, if you have a flavor product here in the store, it doesn't matter whether you sold it or not to, uh, doing a compliance check. If you have the product there, it's a violation." Those, those are in the same lines. Number four, eliminate cigar packaging pricing exception for adult-only retail tobacco stores. So when you pass the local regulation and say, "Hey, now you can't sell packs of cigars containing fewer than four cigars," and setting up a minimum pricing on those products, whether it's a single cigar, whether it's a pack of cigar, uh, we gave, uh, adult-only retail tobacco stores, uh, a pass. So they can sell, uh, a pack of cigars containing fewer than four cigars pursuant to the local regulation, as well as, uh, the pricing, they can, uh, they're not obligated to follow the pricing, uh, uh, criteria, including the local regulation as well. We continue to find these products in the hands of kids, and the only way they're getting these products is by getting them through those adult-only retail tobacco stores. There's only one store like that in the city, and that's one of the stores that actually was cited, uh, the last store that was cited here in the city on the twelfth of February. So, uh, I found them, the first time they were, that they were, they were cited, they were cited because doing a compliance check, one of my minors was able to get into the store. And pursuant to the regulation, if they want to operate as an adult-only retail tobacco store, they have to stop a minor at the door. If a minor, anybody younger than twenty-one crosses the threshold, that's a violation already, and they will find it first time. So the, on this particular last inspection, they had the products there. If you went into the store, if you've ever been there, there's a glass door, and then inside, you're already inside the store, but then there's a little gate. And for years, I, I, I pushed them to put a lockup because that setup is not good. But still, they can reach for products on one side, and as I was in the car preparing to enter to re-inspect, I saw a, a customer go in, he went through the, the glass door, he didn't have to go through the gate, he was just like, you know, interacting with, with them over the little wall that's there, which is, it's not too loud.
Okay.
So, so I think that these products, if, if, if they end up in the hand of a kids anyway, they shouldn't be sold legally, I'd say. Number five, and this is like a straightforward, update all the fine amounts and tolling periods to match the state law. So, the state law sets up the, the, the bases for all the other regulations. You can't be more, you can be stricter than the state law, but you cannot be more lenient than the state law. So if the state law says, "Well, you're gonna be, uh, your permit is gonna be suspended for up to thirty days," you can't say no suspension. It's either one day or thirty days, you see what I'm saying? So, we have to change the local language because the local language does say, "Well," they have different tolling periods, they have, for example, in the city, he has a twenty-four month tolling period. In the state regulation, it's thirty-six months. So we have to abide by the state regulation and have a language that says thirty-six months. The fines, it's a thousand, two thousand, five thousand pursuant to the state regulation, pursuant to local regulations, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred. So that's outdated, you have to update these regulations. Number six, strengthen the state law definition of tobacco product flavor enhancer to include all kinds of flavored wraps, included hemp ones, and flavored bowling bags. What happened was, state law says, "Hey, you know, you cannot sell any flavor product that can easily be combined with a tobacco product to convey flavor to it." The problem is that new products come out pretty much every day, you know, the industry is pretty, pretty much prolific as far as that is concerned. So they came up with new flavor products called, uh, the hemp wraps. So these wraps are made out of hemp, but they are flavored, and they're being sold in the local stores, not at marijuana dispensaries. So they're sold with tobaccos being served. And while the state, right, the state language includes anything that's, that's a wrap that can be combined, that has flavor that can be combined with tobacco products. Uh, some people felt that this wasn't clear enough, so what we did in Lowell was to clarify the local language to make sure, hey, yes, this does include these products as well. Number seven, require retailers to have the manufacturer's letters organized. This is like, it almost goes without saying, you know, if people, if they are mandated to have letters from the manufacturers of every tobacco products they sell, stating that those products are not flavored, then they have to be able to produce those letters upon demand, that's what the state law says. But when you get to do an inspection, if they have the letter, they just give you a pile of letters, and say, "Look for your letter." They say, "No, we're gonna point to maybe three, four products and say, 'Let me see the letters that cover those products.'" They have to produce those letters upon demand, without having us be there for an hour. So, having them organized is pretty much, uh, an easy thing. I have, I've given every retailer in the city a binder, I've explained how you use a binder to organize the letters, it's very simple. We just wanna make sure that we have a covenant about that on the local regulation. Number eight, set the suspension length for first-time sellers to minus to one day. This is, I'm not fond of this, but this is a decision that this board made. Uh, what the Board, Board of Health in Lowell did was, upon my suggestion, they included a three-day suspension for first-time sellers of tobacco to a minor. State regulation says, "Your permit could be suspended for up to thirty days." I said, "Well, let's, let's make this three days because a second offense pursuant to the state law of any kind, second offense of any kind, it's a seven-day suspension." So let's make a first day, a first offense, a three day. They, uh, decided to, uh, follow that suggestion, and that's what they passed. This board, uh, at one point, you took a vote, I mean, it wasn't pursuant to a public period, but you took a vote and say, "Hey, we'd like to make these just one day suspension." That's what it is. That's why I changed the language just to say, "Number eight, set the suspension length for first-time sellers to minus to, uh, one day." I would prefer three days, but, uh, if, if that's what you still want to do, I'm fine with that. Number nine, uh, set the other suspension lengths to specific number of days. State regulation has languages like opt-two, suspensions opt-two thirty days, opt-to seven days. And those kinds of languages lead to inconsistent results. So we have to have them firm, like, you know, if you have a second offense, it's a seven-day suspension. If you have a first offense, it's a one-day suspension. If you have, like, subsequent offense, it's a thirty-day suspension. Instead of having you guess how many days you want to apply in this situation versus another situation where the facts would be very similar. So this would protect you from, uh, greater liability because your, your decisions would be all consistent. Number ten, and I wanna explain this one way further. Number ten, make it explicit that all communications are to be conducted primarily with local establishments pursuant to permits, licenses, and notifications. So, why is this here? I'm gonna give you two examples, Speedway and Friendly Dollar. These two companies are large chains, their corporate offices are not here, and sometimes they're located in a different time zone. So, they have as a internal policy that, that licensing applications, the permanent applications are conducted by them. So they tell their local managers, so that local managers want nothing to do with permits or licenses. However, the local regulation, what you have in the books, what the state law says is that they are the gatekeepers for, to protect the business from getting violations. For example, selling tobacco to minors. If, if, if one of the penalties lost the permit, and they don't wanna hear anything about the permit because the corporate office tells them that they're, they're responsible for pursuing the licensing and permits applications. So they pay no attention, we get more violations at the local level. And we don't get them to, to, uh, renew their permits on the time they fashion in the city. They are notoriously late. Uh, I can tell you right now, the Friendly Dollar, they have two stores in the city, they have been, without the ability to sell tobacco products for many months, simply because they don't renew the local permit, or they don't renew the, the, the state license. Speedway the same, the same way. I went to Speedway last week, they're in inspection, I've been there many times, they know, local management doesn't know anything. You wanna tell them, "No, it's just a corporate office." I said, "Listen, you're the manager of the store, you are responsible." So if they're gonna pursue, if they're gonna conduct the, like, like, like the administrative a- aspects of, you know, issuing a license, a permit, you have to make sure they follow up on that, that you're on top of the expiration date. So know that you have to have valid permits and valid licenses on the wall before you can sell tobacco. Like, this is a misconception, a lot of these stores in the city, they apply for permit, and through the years have been told, like, uh, sometimes by people in the special services, "Oh, now you're set to sell." The law says, you have to have the permanent licenses and you have to report. So if they apply for a license, they don't have a license. If they apply for a permit, they don't have a permit. If they do everything, they're waiting to receive a permit. They have to look at the dates, get the expiration date comes, they have to receive the permit, they have to renew tobacco products. That's the job for the local manager. If we say that, you know, we can just talk to, uh, the corporate office someplace in other state and, and get them to renew the permit, they don't care about what's going on at the local level. This is a way for us to, uh, make sure that they're more on top of these, that they prevent more preventable violations, like selling to minors or selling without a permit. Number eleven, this is not a tobacco issue, number eleven. Regulate to sell Delta eight products. Why is it here? It is here because I go into the retail stores and I see them, uh, all the time. So, the city of Lowell has, for example, the city of Lowell has a local city ordinance, it's not a board of health regulation, a city ordinance that, that deals with, uh, synthetic recreational marijuana use. So, Delta eight and Delta nine products are variations of marijuana products with, they're less potent, but they get people high if, if you, if you consume enough of it.
Just to clarify, we're talking about CBD, Delta eight, no?
Well, it, we're talking about Delta eight.
Delta eight, uh...
They have synthetic marijuana.
Okay.
So they can get you high, this is not CBD. But since you mentioned CBD, I'll, I'll, as soon as I finish here, I'll make an aside about CBD. So, Delta eight products, I'm not sure whether the city has a city ordinance that covers the sale of these products. If they don't have it, it's a public health issue, these products are considered to be dangerous by the FDA, they're not approved by the FDA, and, uh, they can get people high. So, they're regulated in the city of Lowell, I had them in this proposed changes, once I found out there was a city ordinance, then I removed it. Uh, I'm not sure whether the city ordinance, the city of Lawrence does have a city ordinance that, uh, regulate Delta eight products. If they don't, then it's something the Board of Health would probably want to look into. Uh, Delta eight, Delta nine, nine, these are synthetic marijuana products.
And you've, you've, uh, since you are our regulator or our enforcement, have you seen, uh, stores with Delta eight and nine in Lawrence?
I, I don't remember specific about Lawrence, but I saw them Lowell, and we call them Lowell. I, I had yet to confirm that here in city of Lawrence. Okay, I, I can't say that, that I saw this in this particular store, I don't remember. Now, you mentioned CBD, right? You can sell CBD in the state of Massachusetts. However, per the Massachusetts Agriculture Resources Department, you cannot have CBD in a food item. But you find CBD in gummy bears all the time, those are illegal. M D R, which is a Massachusetts, uh, agency, they expect local Board of Health, Boards of Health to actually, uh, enforce these. All right? Uh, and up until now, all I've been doing is educating them. Because we don't have local regulation that says, "Hey, you can have these." So, so M D R, in, in theory, do the enforcement. However, there's three people at M D R. So they can cover the whole state, they can't have inspectors going to places, that's why they expect local Boards of Health to actually do enforcement. So my advice is, if you want to regulate CBDs, make sure they don't show up, because when they go and do educate retailers, some of them remove them on their own accord, right? But some may decide to keep them and sell them. So if you have CBD in a, in a food product, it's, uh, like, like a edible product, it's illegal. If you have CBD on the claim that makes a health claim, it's also illegal. All right, so if you say, "Well, does it do it to backache?", that's illegal. You cannot make that claim, make that claim, you can't sell it.
Illegal under state law or federal law?
Under state regulation, M D R. Under state regulation, M D A R, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture Resources.
M D A R.
M D A R. Finally, the flower, they can't sell the flower in Massachusetts. So aside from these issues, they can sell CBD. The problem is, I haven't seen the CBD product that's not an edible or that doesn't make a health.
I mean, it's ubiquitous, it's at every food corner store, gas station.
Right, if you go in M D A R.
CBD is a pretty benign substance, it's not, we're not talking, I mean, it's, it's been, it's been unregulated for many, many years.
But it is regulated in the state of Massachusetts and these are the regulations, you can easily fire them at M D A R website.
I mean, I thank you for, for presenting this. Um I, I, I think we should focus on tweaks to the local regu-, regulations regarding tobacco products and flavored tobacco products, as you have stated, stated. Um do you have any questions about this? We can certainly deal with Delta eight and Delta nine products and CBD at another time, but there's a lot to digest here.
Absolutely.
Um.
I would love to, I would love to see the write-up, I think a lot of this has, uh I think we should debate quite a few things. Uh I, I'm, I, I'm a bit advocate of my fellow Laurentians and I know, I hang out with a lot of them. I'm a very proud Laurentian, I go out, have a drink, I go to the parks, I talk to people, I am a people person. So not only am I a health official, but I also have to be an advocate for people who tell me when we overstep or have overstepped. Um so I will talk to my fellow Laurentians and I'll get a point of view and give them, then I'll digest my point of view in the medical form and then we'll, we'll talk about it.
Let me ask you a question, if we make a motion to move forward with a draft regulation, that'll still give us an opportunity.
Absolutely, so you gotta review the draft.
Yes.
So you can discuss the.
Make a motion to.
So uh can I make a motion to have Caesar draw up a draft of this, or then we can have further discussion to see if we're gonna push this forward?
Just to be clear, I'm not gonna believe anything related to uh Delta eight products or CBDs, just exactly.
Exactly, yes, please.
Can I ask a question?
Uh sure.
It may be a dumb question, but I'd like to know. What was the reason behind prohibiting all menthol products and whose idea it was?
Menthol products make you smoking, the harsh impacts of smoking, that is, unpleasant uh and harsh assets of smoking uh more bearable. And that's one. Number two is because they unfairly uh target, the industry has targeted minorities, especially black and Hispanics. And that's why they decided to.
And, and there's a lot of data showing that the elimination of menthol tobacco products has led to the cessation of millions of smokers in this country.
Well, I think that it was only prohibited in Massachusetts, I mean.
That's not true, there's other states where it's prohibited, absolutely, absolutely. But it, it, I mean, I think that if any one major intervention that led to uh millions of people quitting tobacco product, it was eliminating menthol. And menthol is a very addictive substance, so.
We live in Lawrence, who wants to have five minutes of the role of the manager, if you really want it. Just be realistic, we live in Lawrence.
All right, so we, 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 we.
It's been quite a while, I think, in the campaign.
Good reason they quit, good reason they quit.
It's done.
Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing the draft regulations, thank you, appreciate that. Uh in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion will carry. Okay, we're gonna go jump to old business. Can we start with five twenty-seven Haverhill Street, apartment one?
Sure, so um as I stated last, during the last board of health meeting, the agent of this board was subpoenaed to present the findings before the housing court. Uh unfortunately, the judge was unable to make a decision on that day. And so we don't know yet uh what's the status of this case um at the housing court. Still pending in our, in our side. Uh we heard today that property owner was able to apply the first um treatment for the pest control. And uh he has presented a pest control plan. Uh and we'll see the results, we'll, we'll, we'll probably follow up with that inspection. Based on that, we'll probably um bring this to the board and decide if this um was remediated or not. Although I have to mention that I, I guess the issue with um not moving forward as fast as we would like with this case is that um the complaint, uh she experiences many problems with her children and we, we know, we talked about that last time. She has six children and they all go to school, they all have different uh illnesses that she have to deal with. Um and, and so at times she's not uh available for, for the inspections, but we're working toward to that.
Okay, all right, we're gonna skip over shared services agreement and jump to sixty sixty-two Yum Moon Street. This was also tabled, but is there any updates?
This is also tabled, uh updates, we had a, the inspections yesterday. Uh the highlight sections are the ones that are still pending, it's still very, um to my understanding and probably the board can discuss a little bit on that if you guys will please or would like to do so. Um but part of these issues, the dumpster permit that is missing and is actually related to the previous um public appearance or participation from a caballito. So caballito is the business that have the dumpster in this uh residential um area. And so what we have right now is a person that does not have space to have a dumpster. It's impossible. And so around the area, around this property where this dumpster is, right behind is that alleyway that does not belong to the city. Um he, he's not gonna be able to put the dumpster there. And he's asking this board, and, and he had this conversation several times with me, where should I put a dumpster? What, what should be the size? I recommended him to go before the zoning board, right? Zoning will probably be able to tell him more about the different um regulations that they have and, and that they take into consideration. But I know this guy, this business um is suffering because now we are asking this dumpster either to be, I never asked for it to be removed. Let me clarify that, I asked to obtain a permit, a dumpster permit. But now since the property owner uh does not want this dumpster to be in her property, so now he's facing that challenge. I, I totally want to, with, with Stephen, if you want to um be involved in this, uh probably review options for these gentlemen, maybe go and talk to DPW and see if they have any um recommendations. I know zoning will be the best bet for him. But at this point, his place where he's at does not have enough space for the amount, for the operation that he runs in his business.
I understand, okay. Okay.
Other things before we move on, um so there's a pending um meeting with um building commissioner. Um these sixty Union Street actually have a means of, second means of egress that is obstructed uh in, in the terms of the size, right? So it's between twenty-four and I want to say um thirty-three. And uh it's, the numbers are not the correct one for means of egress, right?
Sure.
And so if this is gonna be permitted for me to take it um from the, from the uh, from the violations, right? It will either have to be reviewed by the commissioner, a letter to be sent to this board, so we can study that. Uh something in writing for me to remove that violation from the ticket or correction order, better say.
How long has that been like that?
Uh so this case is about to be a year and a half with us.
Okay.
Um. There's, there's a lot of um going back and forth between the tenants or the occupants and the property owners. Uh at times uh they're not available for the inspections or at times the remediations or uh are not completed the way the, the agents or the inspector would like to see. We speak about the, what is the code, the code requirements, right? So at times even if something is not easy to be cleaned, it doesn't have a smooth surface and it requires for the, for a whole item to be changed. It's difficult, we understand, for a, a property owner to understand that they just bought a property that was like that. But if you bought a property that was like that, you know what you were doing, right? And so we try to be fair for both parties, tenants and the property owner. But once a violation is reidentified, it's there and I cannot remove a violation without the proper remediation.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to move on to new business, um actually, it's probably old business, it's an update on P and P Deli Grocery. We have, we um, we lifted the suspension of their food uh permit, are they up and running?
They're up and running.
Did they pay all their violations?
They did.
Okay, and they're gonna, are they gonna operate without cooking or preparing food, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, excellent.
But it won't be before the school, in a situation that's like.
Okay, the seven day suspension that we talked about, excellent, excellent. Okay, um can we talk about shared services agreement?
Are you ready?
Uh I'm ready.
Okay.
Um before you get started, I'm gonna have to go downstairs, the ordinance meeting is beginning in five minutes and I have to go.
Okay, yeah.
Hopefully I have everything that I'll check online, I'll, I'll watch you online, I'm sorry.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
They started uh six fifty?
At least I had seven, but I'd have to get the papers together.
I gotcha, okay, very good.
Mountains of papers.
Uh huh, uh huh, sure.
Thank you.
Isn't there a city council meeting down there tonight?
Ordinance.
No, the city council meeting tonight at Methuen, no.
Ordinance. And it's a long one too.
Front desk is gonna be there.
Who's that?
With the pouring, and here pouring.
Okay. Ethan.
Okay. So I think we've covered things, what is in brief, um the state has just issued, oh, let me see here, hold on. It just came in about a minute ago. Yeah, that's it, okay. All right, so we've had a series of meetings with the state, as we do, updating shared services and some of our successes and failures and challenges with that. Um and right now, the state has said to Methuen, um they are, the plan was from Methuen to hire a couple more inspectors under the shared services grant. But because there's these challenges between the two cities, as we talked before, they are withholding the permission to hire those inspectors. And so we do more work on the shared services grant. Okay, that's overall what it is, this just came out a few moments ago.
Okay.
Um I just want you to be aware of that. I think the other piece that I wanna mention, there's a lot to talk about shared services, the other piece is that's right now, the city of Lawrence has asked Methuen to not allow me to be here to work on shared services or anything with the city of Lawrence right now. Um I'm here because it's a public meeting, but I think, I don't have much reading, um.
Moving forward, well, starting yesterday, uh you're not allowed to be a consultant for the city of Lawrence.
So, a couple.
Who requested that?
The city of Lawrence, I don't know who, I don't know specifically, we haven't seen, I have not seen anything in relation regarding that. But I think that's another reason why the state is withholding the funds for the hiring of those inspectors, so that's what we have.
I was able to provide you guys with a copy of what was the P H E work plan for Methuen and Lawrence. Um that was actually part of, like I said, the work plan that was presented, um you guys have a, a copy over there, but you can read up this one as well. One more?
This is something that, if I may, this is something we wrote up, it's part of the shared services, and we gave this.
I just wanna say one comment, uh it saddened me that you are not going to be our agent, uh this, this, I've been part of this board for about ten years and uh it's been broken, you know, since the times of Landiva. Uh my things need to change, I, I respect your knowledge and I'm very saddened that I'm not gonna be able to lean on that. And since I've been part of this board, just the setup of the organization of the board, when I started Landiva to Rivera and actually Rivera kicked me off this board because she didn't like my opinion. And I think I'm very, I'm extremely saddened that you're not going to be a, a person that I can lean on in knowledge, uh in, in support on your knowledge, but this board, I'm saying publicly, I think it needs to change, I'm here to make changes. I want this Lawrence to be one of the best cities in regards to code and I'm sad that I'm not gonna be able to lean on you. And this isn't, so in, in regards to this administration, I do have contact with the administration, I do speak to Brian often and I do relay uh things to him, unfortunately, me and Gordon can't meet with him at the same time, cause that's official meeting. Um but this, I'm gonna push to change this board and make the city of Lawrence health code up to par with every other city. Thank you very much and I'm saddened, sorry.
Well, I think, thank you, I think that um, that, well, before we go through this, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that's necessary here, as we said this before. I just wanna just briefly, briefly, briefly say that um I think it's doable, I think you can achieve it, um I know you can achieve it and the possibilities are really quite exciting. Right at this moment though, um one of your best opportunities is the shared services because of the funds that are behind it, I think we mentioned that before. And I just reiterate that um in my work doing this in pub, local public health, never before has been the kinds of funds that are available now to do this kind of work. This is unique and it's a good opportunity. Um I will still be, right now, doing some work with Methuen. Um with a lot, I'm happy to continue providing advice and, and support here in Lawrence, but right now, that's what we have. Right now, they've been asked not, I've been asked not to be here.
Wouldn't that be a decision of the board of health?
Well, it very well could be, well, actually, yes or no, I mean, that's more of a legal question and you would have to ask the city solicitors' office. The way I read it is that here's, here's what it is, I'm employed by Methuen, I'm not an employee of Lawrence. Actually, I'm a consultant, I'm not an employee, I, I work as a consultant in Methuen, but my contract is with Methuen. So Lawrence has no ability, they did try to fire me before and they tried to fire me under, when Alfonso was the director, he was informed that he couldn't do that because it has to leave Methuen. Um and I stayed on. At this point though, um the mayor has the authority to hire or fire, but he doesn't have the authority to hire or fire me. Um I believe, and it's a legal question, I believe that he could say, well, he has, he can say anything he wants. He can say to Methuen, I don't want or I want somebody, but it's up to Methuen, that's something Methuen and I are talking about. Do we comply with the mayor's request now, is there a way to answer, they could apply.
I mean, we rely as a board on your expertise and your guidance, we rely on your knowledge, um uh having seen other cities, how they conduct health departments. I mean, it's, it's a vital, um you know, you, you contribute something vital to our, to our future and it just seems, it seems unfortunate that, that we would not be able to consult with you.
I don't know, to be perfectly frank, which I try to be anyway, I don't know, I don't know if legally, does the city of Lawrence can re, can order me not to be here, I don't know. Uh as I look around, I'm not exactly sure the legal status.
I mean, I sa-, I think we can certainly invite you to the board of health meetings.
Oh, well, I, I don't think you can keep anyone out of a public meeting unless you're interrupting your.
But as a participant.
I'm happy to be, I'm happy to be, and I'm happy to provide the support that I have.
Because the shared services agreement is our best hope for expanding our, our, our health department and hiring more inspectors and getting more training. I think that, you know, that, that is essential and, and if Lawrence is gonna maintain this grant, um. I think that, you know, that, that is essential and, and, and if Lawrence is gonna maintain this grant, um, as you have mentioned, certain things have to change. Um, and, and, uh, I think we continue to need your support in terms of spelling that out, what needs to happen.
I'm happy to, I'd be very happy to, I, 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 to be, again, I'm, I, I enjoy being here in terms of the support and the, and the provided guidance. Um, I also know that, uh, there are a lot of challenges here, there's a lot of challenges. Um, but, there's, the, the, there's, the, the, the opportunities are enormous and I think they're doable. Um, but, uh, I don't know, it's something that Methuen and I are talking about in terms of what they want me to do regarding, um, Lawrence. And that's really who I have to respond to on that.
What would you say would be the, I'm gonna, five essential changes that need to happen? One we talked about was getting a third board member, okay?
I would say.
Two is getting a health director.
I would say that there's, there's a number of things, okay? Yes, having a full board, a full functioning board is really important, I, again, we've talked about that.
Yes.
Um, I think a budget, a budget that's committed and devoted to the health department. Right now you are the lowest funded health department in the state. Uh, most health departments in your level of population are well above a million dollars a year. And you're right now about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, approximately. Um, that's a big difference.
It's not like we're lobbying for a bigger budget just to have a bigger budget. This is what I'm talking about, Kelly.
That, that, that's a huge difference, um, and, and it's, and it's, I don't know how else to describe it. Uh, you can't do much with that. Um, and I think that the, um, I think there's some core functions of the department that really need to be focused on. And that's why, for example, I sent some of those memos out regarding, one example for food establishment inspection, the, the school kitchen. Um, there are numerous, numerous failures and, and gaps within that part of, the process of fulfilling those core functions. Those could be, those could be dealt with, but it's going to take a lot of training. But the training is a combination of some online training, but also in the field training and also an oversight and supervision by people, by individuals that really know the field and know what they're looking for, know what that image is and what, creating that mission of what the department has to do for the core functions. And essentially that's everything under the state sanitary code is really non, non-negotiable by law. You have to fulfill those functions. So to give you, so to give you one within that, you have a large number of food establishments here that have not been inspected or partially inspected and the ways are inspected, all of you can spend hours just talking about those.
Yeah, yeah.
But that needs to be done.
And how many, just to tell people who are listening, how many establishments of food we have here?
We're not exactly sure. We're not, we can't even give you a number.
A rough estimate, let's think of a rough estimate.
About five hundred.
About four hundred.
Um, and there's many, many serious issues as to how those are addressed. And the goal is not to shut them down, the goal is to bring them into compliance, there's ways of doing it, but it takes time and it takes effort and it takes resources. So for example, an establish, an establishment that's been operating for many years, has not been to code for many years, that takes time. You just don't just go in and say, well, you're shut down, unless it's something so egregious, something so terrible that you know somebody's gonna walk out and, and, and might, you know, be impacted immediately.
How many food inspectors we have right now? Sorry, I'm gonna cut you off. I, I wanna clarify, cause everybody's listening, so I, I wanna clarify, because I remember before we only had one under, uh, under Rivera.
Valda.
We, we had one, how many we have now?
It's hard to say.
It's hard to say.
I mean, rough number, more than one?
More than one?
No, so I wanna say potentially three.
Sorry. Potentially three.
You put me right on the spot and, and, and this is why I think that a very understanding of, um, our, our organizational chart and within our department, how many inspectors we have, is because I don't have that, uh, information. And we need transparency, right? So perhaps we have four new inspectors, I want to believe that two of, two of them are designated to the food, uh, program protection as food inspectors, but they have not been presented officially to the department, so I do not know them.
So we went one, we had one for many years, that was horrible, one for four hundred and now we have three, that's still not up to par.
That, that, that we know.
If, if I may, becoming a food inspector is actually a long process.
It is a long process.
It's a process because the food code itself is about, the food code itself is about three hundred pages long and the food attic, which explains the food code is about four hundred pages long. And then you have the state code. That doesn't mean that applies to everything, but you have to have the understanding and the training to know what is and what is not and how do you interpret that and how do you reply to the various establishments. So if you, for example, if you have a sushi operation, that's one thing, if you're just selling a bode, you know, it, it matters. But you have to have that training and the experience and the understanding to apply it. And then we have housing. Housing issues in the city are enormous, people are, people are living in dire straits, the, the housing stock is old, the housing stock is tired and not well maintained for the most part, people are doubling up and tripling up, we have numerous issues.
Lots of illegal apartments.
Those issues are not unique, but they're, they're overgrown in the city. You know, we talked about shared with, with, with Lawrence, but Lawrence has the same issues, but nowhere near at the level here in Lawrence.
Okay.
Lawrence you have.
I'm gonna have to abrupt, um, that, the shared services, um, we're gonna continue it at the next meeting. We haven't gone to thirty-three Hamlet Street or five forty-three forty-five South Broadway?
That is correct, we can table, uh, thirty-three Hamlet Street, which is, what, which is a, um, probably an understanding of what a food inspection is and how we receive complaints and how our department responds to, to these type of complaints. So we can table, um, this item.
Okay, five forty-three forty-five South Broadway, okay.
We have, they're here. They're here. So before you, you guys have a, uh, notice, uh, sent to Mister Pablo Ramirez to be here before board members. Um, we went on his property after a complaint received and a phone calls received from fire department, police department. So, uh, upon arrival, we were, uh, looking at two different potentially illegal areas in this property, which was the basement and the attic. The basement was, um, taken care right away by the building department. I don't have the documentation that was given to Mister, uh, Pablo Ramirez, but I know a verbal, um, order to remove the kitchens and the bathrooms and, uh, to allocate people and find, uh, housing for them was ordered in place. But before us, we have both property owner and the occupant of the attic space. Um, this is quite interesting because, um, the attic is considered, open my brain, we could, we found the attic to be probably, uh, an extension of the second floor apartment. And it was re, uh, renovated, um, to be a unit, um, but it does not, has all the requirements to be a legal or safe unit. And when we said legal, that is most, that part is most of the building and, and, and when they go like, they pull all the permits that were necessary to renovate or have this unit, um, changed from an attic to a, a unit that can be habitable. Um, perhaps the health department goes more of what is safe for the, the occupants. And so one of the concerns that we have at that time was the means of egress, uh, only being one and potential, um, like hot water out of range for what we, we needed at, at that point that we went, it was one forty-one, uh, way over what the state regulations or the housing court, um, code, uh, uh, mandates. Uh, we also had, uh, they, then we were lacking of guardrails and handrails, natural light and natural ventilation in some areas. You guys go and review these, um, violations, we thought at that moment that it was a good idea for these board members, um, probably consider these added to be unfit for human habitation. And Ethan, if you wanna add something?
Do you have any pictures?
We don't have any pictures, I have it on my phone if you guys want.
I mean, I think the, I mean, uh, you know, hot water, that's not, that can easily be rectified, but one means of egress in a building with, with, that's not sprinkled is, 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 I mean, that would, that would not pass any fire code.
Can I add something for this as well? And that is, um, I was there with Wiz Melon and, uh, these are the tenants here, um, and the, the owner. Uh, as Wiz Melon said, I just wanna reiterate one thing and that is, if it's illegal does not mean it's not, it's not inhabitable, those are two different definitions. So we look at it from a health perspective, a health code. Um, if we were to, there's actually two rooms in the attic essentially, there's a kitchen, living room, dining room, and then there's a bedroom in the back, in the front, I think, in the front part of the room. The bedroom in the back is not habitable in my opinion, from my, it doesn't have enough windows, it doesn't have an emergency escape window, it should not be habitable. It is not habitable. However, the other space is, um, actually really quite nice and it has enough windows, it does have the one egress. And the one egress goes down to the second floor to a hallway. It's possible that hallway could be configured to have two means of egress off that hallway, um, with some reconstruction and, and, and renovation. Um, and there's enough windows in the front, the back room, which is by the way, large enough for habitation for two people, it has enough square footage. And it has a kitchen, it has a bathroom, it has everything that it needs, um, and the, uh, and the window is large enough for emergency escape and rescue. So, yes, it only has the one actual means of egress, um, but it's not, it's not like a typical illegal apartment that we run into, this is a little bit more on the edge. And my advice would be, one of the things to consider here is, yes, find it unfit for habitation, but it does not have to be condemned in order to be immediately vacated. Because it has, I'll be off in a second, done in a second, um, because it has those, it has that one egress and it also has the windows.
Right.
It's not perfect, it's not perfect, but it's, it's, it's not dire, it's not that dangerous in terms of overalls.
I see, I see.
Um.
And that's where we defer a little bit.
That's exactly, so if you find it unfit for habitation, it does not have to be condemned, it can be condemned later, depending on if the condition's worsened or if the landlord doesn't make certain.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the owner.
Yep. Um, well, I'm, uh, I'm in this situation right now, uh, I never wanted to be in this situation, um, um, I, uh, I would like to, uh, get my space into code and, and, and not to be legal and, and to all the codes and all that. Uh, I know, uh, it's not gonna be able to be habitable until I do that, but I would like to do that and I would like to get into the process and get everything the right way done.
So you, you have no objections to making, to the board making a motion to make this particular unit unfit for human habitation, but not condemn it?
Yes, yes.
While you're getting it up to code?
Of course, um, I have.
Okay, that's simple.
Uh, are you the tenant, can I hear from the tenant?
Well, right now, um, we've been going like through a process, cause this has been, we've been going through much more than just the apartment, cause we're going like through lawyers and everything right now, like.
But there's more of a legal case than, yes, okay.
Yes, there's more of, of a legal case than housing case.
Okay.
Well, it's housing, but it's more of like housing, legal, a lot of things has been done to me, you know, um, through all this process, so, um, I'm, I don't know what he wants to do with his apartment, that's up to him and that's up to you guys, what he wants to do and what you let him do. I'm not against whatever he wants to do over there, honestly, like he already.
Hey, you still reside there right now, you reside there at this time, you live there at this time?
I don't know, I don't know. Um. Well, I don't and I do, cause I still have my keys. Um, but when we came, okay, I have to tell you basically, so.
Where against the advocate, where, where advocates go?
Okay, so this started, um, back in January and he wanted me out of the apartment. So he, he self-help himself by doing a restraining order against me, so, to take me out of the apartment. So I was out of my apartment, so I was not leaving on my apartment because he lives on the second floor. So he did all this to get me out of my apartment, not the right way of him going through housing. So that's why I said it's more of a legal thing that we're going through right now than all of this. So it's like, I don't know what I'm allowed or not allowed to say basically, cause I have a lawyer for it.
Yeah.
But this is where it's coming from, you know?
Okay.
So I haven't been in my apartment for a while because first they let me know that I, like I had the, the order, I couldn't be in my apartment, then they told me, um, I couldn't be in my apartment.
Yeah.
And then after that, I didn't feel safe in my apartment because I didn't feel safe around him. Um, so it was just, I was there, like my stuff was there, but I was not there.
This, I didn't really want to get into this situation, what's going on is that, um, we have, we've been through, going through a legal process and, um, it's a, a legal process because she was actually, um, harassing me and she actually, uh, uh, trained me before, so that's why I did the, the order. After that, um, they actually, um, I don't want to get into much into it, but it's a lot, they, the gentleman here tricked me to say that they moved and they didn't move and then they had some cameras and they, they saying that I, I went in the place without.
Okay, I'm gonna leave this for the heading board.
But it's, yes, it's just, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to close this out, I, I, I would love to, we're all at, but should we make an objection?
That's why I said it was more of a legal case.
You have to make a.
Can I, can I ask one question also?
Sure, Kelly.
So I do see that this happens a lot, right? So what happens, if you say it's uninhabitable, I don't even know the difference of.
Or it's free for human habitation.
There are two things, right? You're saying if you could bring it up to code, what if he's in an area where that's not code or it shouldn't have been done in the first place? Or it didn't, it had a new zoning or something, like where does the ball drop and not end up?
Let's not get into that.
Yes, and so in conversation with Mister, uh, Ramirez, before we explained to him that that's, uh, part of our guidance, right? Once, um, inspectional services, the fire department or police department is aware of these situations, we try to, um, not only comply with all the codes, including zoning, right, and all the ordinance and all the regulations. Uh, he was informed that he needs to appear or go before the zoning board and they will discuss this, depending, like you said, where the, this property area is, uh, located and is very, this area is actually very, uh, quite complex. Half of his property is in Andover.
I see, I see.
So for us to make a decision on his property, now we need to also understand, now that we have to be, uh, ruled by Andover, um, laws and regulations, but we also have to be in compliance with what the law requires.
Now, I'm gonna have to interrupt, I have to be at ordinance meeting, I'm late, I'm gonna make a, um, I'm gonna have.
Uh, a motion.
To make this particular property, say the address.
To, okay.
Okay, uh.
Five forty.
Three.
Five.
So I'm making a motion to make five forty-three, five forty-five, uh.
Just the.
Habrel Street?
Habrel Street, just the.
I see.
Just the attic.
What's that? Five forty-five, five forty-three, five forty-five, South Broadway, Street, Attic.
South Broadway, okay. Okay, five forty-three, five forty-five, South Broadway, Street, Lawrence Mass, Attic, uninhabitable.
Unfit for human habitation.
Unfit for humans, unfit for human habitation.
I second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, I second it.
Okay, next meeting will be the twenty, um, uh, twenty-sixth of March.
Twenty.
Let's see, I think you forget.
Okay, so have a good day.
I just want to give him his keys, everything's out of my apartment, so you hopefully.
So let's, let's turn off the.
Yeah, I wanted to give him, yeah.
Did you say twenty-sixth of March?
Yes.
March twenty-sixth, yes, good, thank you.
Okay, Mister Pablo.
How are you?
We got back. Um. Sorry.
Sorry.
Caesar. And um Delta eight. There's been a lot of press leak in the paper. Show some of our others.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a second one, Charlie?
Sure.
And I wanna ask you a question.
Sure.